Good evening. The Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, October 27, 2020 will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Heitman.
Here.
Trustee Dempsey.
Here.
Clerk Vorba present. Trustee Dorchevitz.
Here.
Trustee Kermy.
Here.
Treasurer Clinton.
Here.
Supervisor Heidie.
Here.
All present, we have a call.
Item B is Pledge of Allegiance. Glenn Miller, could you lead us tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Glenn. Item D is the approval of the consent agenda. Any comments or questions by the board?
Regular agenda.
I'm sorry, yep. Item C, approval of tonight's agenda. I need a motion.
Mister Supervisor, I move we approve the agenda as written.
Motion's made by trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorba. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, item D, approval of the consent agenda. Item D, comments or questions by the board?
Couple of comments I had.
Yep.
Thank you, Dan, for a great job on making all your purchases from AutoZone, a Plymouth Township company this period. It's very good. One thing you guys, as a board after me, may want to think about is having a township car for short jaunts around town instead of having to pay mileage to somebody. I think Mark used a company car there for a little while when we had a chance and saved some money. And, you know, this month was $118. We certainly could have been better keeping township coffers. The other piece, I had the bills this month, so that was very good things. But the planning department, monthly reports, commercial alterations and additions, 12.7 million to date. Damn, we're doing good. Six million residential. People want to come to Plymouth Township. There's a reason. So thank God you guys are doing the right thing here. These numbers are great. So thank you. That's all I got.
All right. Anybody else on item D? Hearing nothing else, entertain a motion on item D.
Mister Supervisor, I move we approve the consent agenda as written.
Okay. Motion's made by trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorba. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Next is item E, public comment, limited to three minutes. Anybody? Okay, going once, going twice. We're gonna move on to new business. Item F1, it's a public hearing on the proposed 2021-22 budget. I'm going to open, I mean, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Mister Supervisor, I move we open the public hearing on proposed 2021 budget, 21-22 budget.
Okay. Motion's made by trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorba. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Supervisor Heidie.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yep.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. We are now, time is 7:03, so the public hearing on the proposed 2021-22 budget is now open. Any questions or comments on the proposed budget? Ginger, would you just, do you have anything you want to add?
I'd like to read the general fund revenue and expense request.
Okay, let's bring that, let's bring that up on the screen.
What page is that again?
I don't know that it's up there.
Well, it's above where you are now. So back up.
The general fund revenue is about $7,985,800. General fund expenditures is about $17,556,700.
Okay. That's the water. Okay.
I'm sorry, I lost where she has the, is she in water and sewer?
No, no. You want to just read that again, Ginger? Because I, I couldn't hear you.
General fund revenues in the amount of $17,985, $17,985,800. Expenditures at the about $17,556,700.
Okay. Did you have a handout for us tonight on that, or no?
It's in the requested budget packet. I think it's like the last gen IDA we had.
Okay.
We had discussed radio this morning, so I don't think there was anything in the memo.
Okay. So with respect to the budget, we've been having several board discussions on the budget now for the last couple of weeks. If there's any comments or questions from the public regarding the proposed general fund budget, we're open to any comments or questions, ideas that you may have. Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mister Supervisor, I move we close the public hearing on the proposed budget.
Motion's made by trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorba. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yeah.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Supervisor Heidie.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item F2 is purchase of police radio console. We have Dispatch Supervisor Cynthia Fell with us tonight, and the chief, who would like to discuss this?
Yes, this is, was obviously discussed at the budget hearing and the budget workshops last November, December. We want to move forward with the purchase of that third console. We've been talking about it. It's been a goal of ours for several years. It's been budgeted. Ginger can speak to there. There was a price increase since we brought this to the board last year, so there will be a budget amendment. Supervisor Fell is here with me this evening, and if you have any specific details about how it's going to be used or what we're purchasing, she'd be happy to explain.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board regarding the radio console purchase?
Yes, I think it'd be great to hear why we're doing it and what it will do.
Good evening. We are purchasing the third radio console for the dispatch center to increase efficiency and utilize the personnel that we have in there currently to their maximum potential. We have three consoles right now that have the ability. One of them is the only one that only answers phones, so we are full staffed at this point, and we have an employee that is not able to work a radio because there isn't one at their console. So it will allow us to kind of efficiently process calls and be able to keep an eye on response time when we get them out to the responders.
Okay.
Who have you reviewed this with in the city of Plymouth, since they pay a portion of it?
I discussed the budget with Chief Cox. He's aware of our needs, and he agreed with the purchase.
Do the finance people also agree, or we don't know?
Well, it's Chief Cox's, in my view, it's his responsibility to discuss with the finance people. But it was, obviously, this was budgeted last year, or for 2020, obviously, so it's not going to be a surprise to them, I don't believe.
And just to follow up, one question on page 72 of the packet. I think it... Right. It says the listed price includes various things, maintenance, so forth, for a period of seven years. Do I have that right?
That's correct.
Maintenance, technical support, and service for the period of seven years.
And we took an opportunity in the remodel that we did earlier in '19. They have most of the wiring already in place for this radio, so it's going to be a really, if approved, a very quick installation for the dispatch center.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Anybody in the public? All righty then. I will entertain a motion on this item.
Mister Supervisor.
Mister Heitman.
I move to approve Resolution 2020-10-27-96, authorizing the Plymouth Township Police Department to purchase one MCC 7500 radio console for Motorola for a total cost of $71,985. Further, that the board authorize the finance director to amend and appropriate general fund balance in the attached Dispatch 101-325-970.000 capital outlay expenditure account in the amount of $9,000.
Motion's made by trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Kermy. Mister Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Supervisor Heidie.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is item F3. This is budget discussions regarding the Water and Sewer Fund, Solid Waste Fund, and Transportation Fund. I'd like Finance Director Moriarty to come forward along with Patrick Felrath. Where is he? I saw him. There you go. Now, Ginger, I guess the big question that I have is, the water, with respect to the Water and Sewer Budget, we, as a board, approved the Water and Sewer Budget for the remainder of this year, only a few months ago. So is this, is this pretty much just a follow-on to what we've already voted on, or are there any substantive changes?
The budget that was approved in the spring was for 2020. The budget that we're acting on tonight, the requested budget is for 21.
Okay. For the, so this will, this will be on the same schedule as the general fund budget now going forward?
Correct. All enterprise funds will now be on the same schedule as all of the other funds that we're adopting.
Okay. Great.
So on page 73 of the packet...
Okay, now, we can't hear you, so we need a microphone that works.
Okay, so on page 73 of the packet, the first presentation this evening will be the Water Sewer Fund for fiscal year 2021. We're presenting a balanced budget this evening with revenues in the amount of $14.6 million. I'm sorry, with expenditures in the amount of $14.6 million and revenues in the amount of $14.7 million, with a financing source exceeding expenditures in the amount of $173,000. On slide 76. On slide 76, here on 74.
Oh, sorry.
On slide 76, you see a year-by-year numerical comparison of fiscal year budget 18, 19, '20's original adopted, and 2021's requested. You'll also see the forecasted budget as requested for 2022 as a projection of the prior year. And you'll see that the requested budget for 2021 is increasing just under 1% over 2020 in the amount of $99,000. Revenues are primarily made up of water and sewer sales. The total amount that you see there that makes up the entire budget is approximately 92%. The revenues for water and sewer are including the 4% increase for the water rates that were increased from $5.60 to $5.82 in August of this year, as well as the sewer disposal rates that were increased from $4.60, $4.60 to $4.79. The budget included a 4% increase from January through June, and another 2.5% increase from July through December as an estimate until we receive additional information from Great Lake Water Authority or from Wautua for the budget going forward. On page 77 is a stack chart. This is the same information that was presented on slide 76. This information just gives you a side-by-side visual graph of the same information, but kind of shows you how the information is growing year over year. The water sales are at the bottom, followed by the sewer sales program revenue, and then at the top you see the intergovernmental and other revenue at the very, very top.
Nice graph.
Things that are included there, sewer sales include your Wautua service charges, disposal sales, industrial waste controls, intergovernmental is the cost of services. Part of that includes the recapture of the GIS implementation that took two years to implement. Water sewer implemented that. There's a chargeback to the general fund and other departments that are not using the GIS. This also includes special assessment revenue for the cost for DPW services to implement those projects and manage those projects. Other revenue includes your interest income, and program revenue includes things like crossconnections, penalties, benefit charges, hydrant revenues, tax fees, things of those nature. Slide 88.
Which portion of this budget has the capital expenditures for water and sewer?
This is revenue only. This is not expenditures yet. This is just our revenue sources and where all of our revenue comes into the fund. Okay, so page 88 is all of our financing uses. This is where all the money now goes. So on page 88 reflects year-over-year, the numerical value of 18, 19 in comparison, the 20 adopted versus the 21 requested, the year-over-year comparison, and it gives you a breakdown of the budget increase of $689,300. This is primarily made up of capital outlay. The capital outlay is, the capital outlay for 2021 includes some carryover for 2020. So this number speaks to the information that was budgeted, that was including the construction for, you're gonna have to help me out here, Patrick, Country Acres Pump Station. And the budget also includes this year, and it may possibly be budgeted, it's budgeted this year, it may be purchased this year, a dump truck in the amount of 150. So in your packet, on page 84, you'll see the dump truck was budgeted in 2021. It was also requested in '20. And you will see on page 86 of your budget packet, Country Acres Pump Station, in the amount of $674,000. This is a project that is started in fiscal year '20, but won't yet be completed this year, so we're asking to budget to complete the project in 2021.
Patrick, the valve repair, is that going to, is that in here, or you think that's going to be a carryover? On the Northville, north side of the system?
That, that is in there. It is a carryover for 2020. So it is in there. Northville, PRV 2020, it says, under capital outlay. That is a carryover.
How's that? When do you think it's going to be completed?
Well, it'll be completed next year, and ideally, we want it to get it at least operational before...
Summer.
Before June.
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah. So at least substantially complete by then.
And we expect that the dump truck will be on the board agenda in December.
Yes, that's our, that's our goal, is to get it in December. We've obtained some quotes from a couple of vendors, so I'm waiting for another one.
Okay. We'll hand it back over to Ginger.
On slide 90. So on slide 90, this is again a stack chart. It's presenting the same information that was provided in the numerical chart. It just summarizes the information that, so you can see it in a different graphical presentation year-over-year. It gives you, again, the 10 major expenditure categories of the entire fund, and breaks down each of those categories, starting with wages at the bottom and the capital, the cost of sales at the top. This is an enterprise fund, so depreciation is an expense of the fund, where general fund does not include that because it's a current, or current year, we only report expenditures for the year. Gatsby 34 is a different fund that we report capital expenditures in for the general fund, so you don't see that as part of the general fund budget. But as an enterprise or a business fund, you do see the expenditures that we record being an arbitrary number, but you do see the investments of, capital investments, though, that we depreciate annually. Next slide, on page 92. So this is again another geographic. This is just to represent fiscal year '21 that you've seen on the prior two slides. But what I did was just take those four functions of the, of the fund to show you kind of how the geographical pie for fiscal '21 is made up. You can see that cost of sales makes up 46% of the total expenditure of the department. Transmission and distribution costs 27% of the total, and the other large one is depreciation and amortization of 17.8.
So since cost of sales is so high, or such a large portion, remember that idea that we tabled to do a consortium buy? Patrick, is, is that a dead thing, or is it a thing that something is still cooking?
No, I can comment on that. The, the original plan was for the Wautua communities using the existing Western Township's Utilities Authority organization to use Wautua as a joint purchasing authority for water wholesale from GLWA. That is something that we, we chose not to participate in those discussions because we felt, based on the advice that we had received from Patrick, that we were in a good position with respect to water storage on a day-to-day basis, and that we would not entertain entry into this consortium unless Northville and Canton expanded their, expanded their water storage facilities. And it kind of, because we were not part of the discussions, I don't know when the, the discussions that they had, that, that Northville and Canton, kind of took a different direction. So now they have formed a discussion group with Livonia and Westland, and I don't think Plymouth City, but they've added now Livonia and Westland, and they talked about forming a consortium to buy water from GLWA. Unfortunately, they do not, they still do not have the necessary water storage infrastructure, okay? And we don't, I mean, we, we can have this discussion later in terms of making a decision, but right now, we still have the advantage of having the, the storage facilities that they lack. The other problem is more of a organizational and political one, because in order for the, Livonia and Westland do not belong to Wautua. So they're now talking about creating a separate authority, a whole new governmental entity, almost like a rival to Wautua, that would be made up of representatives of all of communities, and then they would have to band together legally to purchase the water. There, they were also talking about using this authority to bond for water towers and water storage in places like Livonia and Westland. So it's, it's kind of taking on a life of its own right now. We're watching it. We're gonna see what, how it, how it moves along down the road, but, you know, it's, there's gonna be a lot of, a lot of decisions that they're gonna have to make before, before they get this thing off the ground.
What I don't get, though, is that if there's only one source that you can acquire a product from, what leverage do you have in forming a consortium? It's, you're gonna pay what you're gonna pay.
I agree about, you don't, the answer is, in my opinion, you don't have any. Because they're the only source. They need a certain amount of revenue to keep their operation going.
Sure.
So if everybody gets together and convinces GLWA to lower the rates by 5%, they're gonna raise them 5% the next year because they need the revenue. You, you may get a one-year benefit, maybe, but, but GLW's gonna identify those communities, and they're gonna raise the rates accordingly, and I don't think you're gonna get any benefit from a consortium. I agree.
They're gonna have to spend millions on storage facilities in order to make this work. So any, any benefit that they would get, I think, would be speculative and very long, long range. So we're gonna watch and wait, and we'll make a decision later on. Ginger, we'll give it back to you, I guess. Can we get a sense of what the other capital, can we go back to the page that has the capital purchases?
What page is that?
88. Capital purchase.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. 86, yeah. 86. Go to the bottom.
Sorry, 86.
There you go.
86?
On the bottom, right there. You got it. Right there, capital outlay on the bottom.
Wood chipper.
Yeah, there's the wood chipper.
There it is again.
So you'll see the other side of that at the general fund budget.
Is that allocated between the golf course and us?
That was in the park and recreation budget, the 101-691, capital expenditure, and then the other half of it was budgeted here to be shared between DPW and Parks and Recreation.
So the golf course will have access to it if we purchase it?
If they need it, we would, we would consider them using it. I mean, we still own the property, so if they have a legitimate use for wood chipping, we, we would more than likely partner with them on it as part of our donation, our assistance in improving the course. And then the CIPP, Patrick, for 2021 projects, can you just remind us what some of those are?
Yes, those are roughly eight locations throughout the township where the sanitary sewer is structurally in disrepair, that we are going to line with sewers, secured-in-place pipe technology. The locations, with the exception of one, they're, they're not in local subdivisions. They're along the primary roads. A few of them are in the industrial parks where we have sewers, larger type sewers that are, that are in need of lining. So not, not too dissimilar from this year, the, the projects that are going on right now. Same, same type of project, more or less.
Okay.
What is the disposal pad? It's a little, I can't read the line there. How much is it towards the bottom?
60.
Is it 60, and what is it?
So that is a, it's more or less a concrete pad where the drain will be connected to the sanitary sewer, and that's to be located at the DPW facility. The back lot. That is needed to separate our water from our waste when we clean sewers or catch basins in order to transfer it over to a landfill. It's, it's a common, you know, it's a common structure you find in DPW yards. We have had a need for it in the past, and in the past, we've used the city of Plymouth, which is located in their cemetery. But it serves other function, you know, it's sort of like a drying bed, but it also would be used to wash our vehicles, because technically speaking, that washed water should go to the sanitary sewer.
So it's outdoors?
It's an outdoor pad, loading, unloading type pad. It's a concrete pad, nothing fancy, but we have to connect it to the sanitary sewer on site.
Are you putting this in the area where you were cleaning up the debris behind the Port Street facility?
Well, this has been on our, on our budget for a few years now. It does have to be looked a little closer as it pertains to the location. It all depends where the existing sanitary sewer is and how far away we can go. So it needs to be looked at a little bit closer, but we intend to do that sometime next year. Right now, that's just a budgetary number.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments for either Ginger or Patrick? Anybody in the audience, questions, comments? All right. So we will be voting on this... So we will be voting on this item on November tenth as well, and I think at this point, Ginger, you can move on to the solid waste fund.
Okay, on the original budget memo, we'll start on slide number ninety-three. But I am going to read from the memo from page seventy-three. We are presenting tonight solid waste with a balanced budget with expenditures in the amount of one point six million. Revenues in the amount of one point six million as well, with the amount of financing sources exceeding financing uses in the amount of thirty-two thousand. The slide that you see again represents a side-by-side comparison of fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, and twenty compared to twenty-one and twenty-two's forecasted. Twenty-twenty's versus twenty-twenty-one's increase of eighty-three thousand is primarily due to solid waste revenue. This is a result of our GFL contract increase of three percent this year. Therefore, our revenue is increasing also. The revenue per month for garbage collection is at fourteen fifty in fiscal year twenty-twenty and will be increasing to fifteen dollars and twenty-five cents per month in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one to compensate for the increase in contractual services that you'll see in the expenditure budget when we get to those slides.
When do we need to vote on that increase?
The contract was in place for seven years. The fiscal year twenty-twenty-one increase actually occurred in fiscal year twenty-twenty at a portion of the fiscal year twenty-twenty budget, which is the last quarter of twenty already included the three percent contract increase for GFL.
So when do we have to have the notice out? When will it first show up on the bills?
We would be going out for bids in twenty-one for the next year.
I think Chuck's point is, we're going to have to vote on that rate increase for the solid waste as a board. So right now, this budget assumes a seventy-five cent increase per month per household. We're just going to have to vote on that before we can put that on the bills.
So when do we have, in order to make the budget tie with what you've done, when do we have to have that increase in place so it can be billed on the quarterly statements that people get?
You could bring it to the board next budget.
We could do it November tenth, but unless you've got, when does the next, the fee, the next increase kicks in? Has it already kicked in, or when does it?
That would be for January first.
It kicks in in January? And so it doesn't have to be November tenth. It could be January, it could be our first meeting in January. I don't think we're going to be underwater at that point.
Well, the December bills are mailed when? Not December, there's a cycle that comes out in January. It's due January twentieth.
The water bill, correct?
Pardon me?
The water bill, correct?
Yeah.
The water bills go out quarterly.
Well, anyway, that's something you need to think about so that we sync it up.
We could consider that for the November tenth, Ginger, you and I and Mark. Huh? We could do that.
Should be a quick item.
Yeah, we should do that.
Put it on the tenth.
For the December tough, for the February tough.
So the GFL contract expires in twenty-two, so we would have to start the process next year.
Really? Doesn't it expire like in September of twenty-twenty-two? So that's still two years away, right? So we might not need to. Very late twenty-twenty-one, right?
So slide ninety-four. So again, the information that was presented to you on slide ninety-three representing the revenue year-over-year is the same information presented here, just in a stack chart. Shows you another geographical presentation of the same information year-over-year. Page ninety-eight. So page ninety-eight is our expenditures for the solid waste. This is our financing uses. Again, a numerical presentation of year-over-year. The total increase to the twenty-twenty-one budget over the twenty-one is fifty-four thousand. This is primarily made up of contractual services in the amount of almost fifty-four thousand, which again is due to the increase to the GFL contract. Next slide, page one hundred, please.
Before you move on a second, how many shred days are in here?
I believe one shred day.
We do one, and the city pays for one. And then we have, we'll have household hazardous waste day as well.
That information you're going to find on page ninety-six.
Good.
There you go.
So it starts on ninety-five and ninety-six. Ninety-five starts with waste disposals, breakdown of trash collections, recycling, and then it goes on to the waste, clean up, composting.
It's in there.
It is in there. I remember the conversation.
It's U.S. Ecology Livonia, isn't it?
All right, so it's in the composting line?
There it is, U.S. Ecology Livonia, vehicle service at thirty-four seventy-one, average of twenty-five, twelve hundred fifty cars.
Do you see it, Kurt?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right towards the top of the page.
No, I'm looking at it. Right there.
Yep.
So U.S. Ecology is the company that does our household hazardous waste day?
There's like dumpsters, there's different components of it. Okay, slide one hundred. Slide one hundred presents the same information that we just looked at numerically. Again, shows contractual services is the biggest part of the budget. Other wages and manufacturers that make up the other portion, and then the other stuff that makes up all of the other pieces, which is a sparse part of the portion of the budget. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board on solid waste? It's pretty standard from what we did this year. We're hoping to do household hazardous waste in May again, rather than October. But again, that's COVID-dependent, but I think that the vendor has been able to adjust to the COVID requirements. Okay, anything else from the board or the public? Okay, we're going to move on to the twenty-twenty-one senior transportation fund budget.
Okay, I'm going to read from the memo again, but you could stay where you are. We are again presenting a balanced budget. Senior transportation fiscal year twenty-one with the expenditures in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand six hundred. And a revenue budget of one hundred and forty-six thousand one hundred dollars with financing sources exceeding financing uses in the amount of sixteen thousand five hundred. You can see year-over-year, the primary change in the budget is a result of intergovernmental services. This is revenue that is made up of cost share for the use of an employee of another fund by another fund. There's been some increase in the use of the senior transportation of employee by the senior center. The city of Plymouth and the township of Plymouth use the ridership or the senior bus transportation. City of Plymouth makes up seventy-two percent approximately of the ridership. So the sixty-nine and the twenty-six thousand combined together make up a total of ninety-four thousand one hundred, which sixty-eight thousand three hundred makes up approximately the seventy-two percent, and the township makes up the other twenty-seven. This is annually completed after the annual audit is done, and we do a true-up to make sure that we have calculated the actual ridership for the year. And we either invoice the city of Plymouth, or we apply a credit if we have invoiced them too much based on their actual ridership for the fiscal year.
Do we need to look at this to make some adjustments to try to make it closer to break even for the future?
We're looking at a variety of options, Chuck, and we'll, you'll be seeing some in the months ahead. The other, the seventy-two percent figure that the city comprises seventy-two percent of the ridership, is that based on twenty-nineteen numbers, or what?
It's based on the historical, during COVID, there was a lack of ridership. We kind of held it stable, so twenty-twenty will kind of be a little bit different this year. We are experiencing some ridership now, but again, ridership is various. There are some special runs that are being made, so this year will be a little bit different. We're holding it at that same amount, but again, the actual true-up at the end of the year based on actual experience is how we will actually determine where we'll be at the end.
So, did you say, I'm not sure if I heard you or not, how many rides this was? You gave us a percentage.
I don't know the actual number of rides. It's just that of the number of rides that we experience, Plymouth typically has seventy-two percent of the ridership.
Do you have like an order of magnitude? Do you have any kind of rough?
I don't remember off the top of my head. I've only completed one true-up so far since I haven't even been here quite a year.
Yeah, yeah.
Bob, we can get that for you. I just recently got the numbers for twenty-nineteen, and, you know, it was several thousand riders. But there's a finite number of eligible riders that we in the city have designated.
Might be cheaper to put them in an Uber.
You never know, but it's about a hundred and thirty-five, or no more than a hundred and fifty eligible riders.
I know.
So it's a very small number, and of that hundred and fifty, I would say that probably three-quarters of them reside at Tonkish Manor in the city.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I think our ridership tends to go up in the summer and then tends to go down in the winter. That's one thing that I did notice, where our percentages change.
Right.
Fluctuation by season.
But the city certainly appreciates the fact that we run this program.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, I think it's great.
Tried, but they didn't see.
I've asked the city several times to take it back, and they laugh at me, so I don't blame them.
I may be taking this bus pretty soon, so just don't go too far.
Okay, slide one oh three.
One oh three?
Yeah, I think you jumped ahead.
I did, I went to.
So again, graphical information of the same, just charted so you can kind of see year-over-year. Chart one oh four. This is just a breakdown, so you can kind of see the percentages by bucket that we have showing all the financing sources coming in for fiscal year twenty-one and how those buckets are made up. The slide looks a little blurry there. So city of Plymouth, total revenue source all-in is forty-seven percent. Township is eighteen, intergovernmental is twenty-nine, and other revenue is six.
Intergovernmental is grants or council on aging or something like that?
Intergovernmental is primarily general fund revenue that's paid for the use of an employee. So the employee that's in the senior transportation, which is an enterprise fund, is budgeted and paid for by the enterprise fund. So when we use an employee that is budgeted by that fund for another use in another fund, that fund has to pay for the use of that employee. So that fund then gets a revenue, and the fund that uses the employee has an expense. Just like we use a park employee, we use a solid waste employee for parks, parks has to pay the solid waste fund for the use of that employee to service the park.
Ginger, are we getting any money from SMART?
So SMART money comes into the general fund. General fund receives the SMART grant funding, and that goes towards the township's cost. So when you see the township's twenty-seven percent that we're paying to the senior transportation fund, that money comes from the grant money that we receive in the general fund. So every month, when we get a bill from the senior transportation for our ridership costs, it comes from the general fund, and the general fund takes that money from our grant money that we budgeted as an expense, and we give it to the senior transportation. And if we don't receive enough grant money, then we would subsidize it with general fund revenue.
And that SMART money is not guaranteed, and it could be, it could go away at some point, you never know.
I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but it's somewhere around twenty-four thousand.
I want to say twenty-five thousand.
So in the end, about how much is Plymouth Township subsidizing this per year, all-in? After, grant isn't considered.
Well, it's.
Grant is not part of the subsidy. That comes from somebody else.
If you look, the township has paid about twenty-five thousand there, and the SMART money is about twenty-five or twenty-four.
Okay.
Roughly, it's almost a break even. And we also have token revenue that comes in. So there is a small amount of token revenue, I think around nine thousand is what we budgeted, but that has been down slightly due to COVID this year.
We were doing well pre-COVID because we had finally implemented a workable fare schedule that was based using tokens, and it was starting to catch on before COVID hit.
How much does a ride cost now?
I believe it's a dollar.
It's like a dollar, but it depends on where you go. If you go to a hospital outside of, like, if you go to U of M, or if you go to Novi, the rates vary based on how far away you go. But to go to Kroger's or something, it's a dollar. Gary, just want to let you know.
It's a dollar.
Yeah.
It's a dollar.
Do you know, Ginger, if the city of Plymouth receives any SMART money?
I believe they do as well. I don't know how much, I haven't asked John.
So you think that maybe that's how they're paying part of their share?
I believe that's how they're partially funding.
Okay, anything else on this?
Do we want to talk about the expenditure side, or?
Sure.
Okay, slide one oh seven. So slide one oh seven, year-over-year again, representation of the major expenditure categories. You see that the twenty-twenty-one budget over the twenty-twenty budget is going down five, just over five thousand dollars. This is primarily due again to depreciation. The senior bus is fully depreciated in twenty-twenty, so we will no longer be recording an expense. Again, this is a business fund, so we record depreciation expense. This goes away for twenty-twenty-one, therefore results in a decreased request for expenditures. Slide one oh nine. And this is again a stack chart that represents basically the same information, shows you capital, capital and depreciation year-over-year. You see that that basically goes away in twenty-one, wages, and then all other expenses. Any questions related to senior transportation that you haven't already asked?
Anybody on the board? Anybody in the public? Okay. So we're all set with that, Ginger. Thank you very much. We'll be voting on the senior transportation and solid waste on November tenth. So next, we have item F four. This is twenty-twenty budget amendments.
Three changes.
You're on. Pardon me? Yeah.
Okay, so I handed out a revised memo because we noticed just prior to the meeting that there was a typo with the motion. The revenue amount that was in there matched the appropriations amount. So I just wanted to let you know that the body of the memo is correct, the three eighty-one seventy-seven, but the motion amount down here that we see, the three forty, should match the three eighty-one up there, and it handed that out to each of you so that you had the revision.
Yeah.
So this is fiscal year twenty-twenty budget amendment. We're going to request tonight a recognition of revenue. These are revenues that we have recently received in the last quarter. And we're going to be recognizing revenues that we've received as well as reducing a few revenues based on revenue recognitions that we've seen throughout fiscal year twenty-twenty to bring the amended budget based on the adopted, more in line with what the actual projections for revenue collections will be this year. We're getting ready for audit in a few more weeks at the end of the fiscal year. for revenue collections will be this year. We're getting ready for audit in a few more weeks at the end of the fiscal year, December 31st. We'll be here before you know it and we're, we're making some changes to get the budget in line with that. Jack?
So just so I understand, this is additional revenue or where we have budgeted something and it is coming in less, we're going to recognize the lesser revenue, so then you get to a net of 381,177? Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, good. I'm with you so far.
And then we have appropriations. So where we have revenue that we're recognizing because we received something, we're then going to turn around, we're going to appropriate it back out. And that's the second part of that spreadsheet that you have that shows a line-by-line item of where we're requesting to appropriate. The total appropriation is 340,961, leading a total of $40,000 to the fund balance. We also have additional revenue that we've received from drug law for the drug forfeiture funds that we'll be recognizing. We received some Yucca money from the sewer or solid wa, or yeah, solid, the Yucca, the solid waste sewer plant.
Well, that would be, Yucca is, Yucca is the sewers plant, so that, that, that goes to Watuwa. Watuwa may have credited that to us.
Yeah, it was a Yucca, it was a check from Yucca, yeah, Watuwa.
Yeah.
Yep, and that will be recognized in the water sewer and the investment, Watuwa that we failed to budget in 2020, but yet we will be, be making that investment. So let's just start out with a quick summary. I actually gave you line-by-line each general ledger number because that's where the funds will actually be recognized in the general fund. And I'm going to actually summarize that based on a conversation that I had that might make it a little bit easier to follow. So we're going to start with just kind of grouping the categories. And the first category is a grant that we received in the amount of $8,546. This was a nonprofit organization that's dedicated to bringing the US voting system into the 21st century and working to modernize the American voting experience. This was a grant that was applied for by the clerk's office and the funding was granted by this not-for-profit organization to be used for election purposes. And we received the grant money and it has been actually deposited into the elections revenue account. And tonight it's before you to recognize the revenue and then later we'll be talking about appropriating it back to the elections office. The second item is state election reimbursement. We originally had projected or budgeted for 2020, $40,000 in the budget. The election in May actually cost a lot more than what we had originally thought we would be reimbursed. And we actually received a check in the amount of $73,400. So we are asking to amend the budget and increase it in the amount of $33,400. So we're going to move the budget from 40 up to 73,400. The next line item is called CRLGG. This is a COVID relief local grant for the government. This was an advance funding from the state of Michigan. This was a pass-through grant from the federal through the CARES Act. And this is to be used for PPE or protective personal equipment. This money must be used up by the end of this fiscal year. We've already started to apply expenditures for items that we have paid for. And you will see in the budget where we are requesting you to recognize the revenue that we received from the state. And then in the expenditure, you'll see we're requesting you to appropriate it so that we can use it for PPE. We also received an insurance refund. We normally do budget annually for reimbursement revenue. We have a revenue budget of $150,000. We did receive a substantial check from MMRMA this year and because of the amount that we received, we're increasing the budget $82,900. So we're asking to revise the budget from $150,000 to $232,900.
There were less outlays because of COVID?
Both. It's based on our local experience litigation and then investment revenue that is realized by the MMRMA's investment pool. And that's distributed to all of the communities.
Okay, the next items are actually broken down by department, but we received a payroll reimbursement grant for our public safety. You'll see a number of line items that make those up coming in with the hazard pay. The total amount that we received from the state was for reimbursement of our April payroll. And the total amount we received in grant funding was $594,716. And we received $66,000 in hazard pay. This was for our September payroll. The next slide item that you will see is $75,500. This is for the City of Plymouth. This is a result of the fiscal year 19 audit. Once the audit was completed, the total expenditures for the dispatch were calculated and the true-up cost of the township's share versus the City of Plymouth's share resulted in an invoice to the City of Plymouth in the amount of $75,500 in which the City of Plymouth has paid. So I need to recognize that revenue and we have as a result amended our revision to our fiscal year 2021 budget to increase revenues next year to align it with the eligible costs that we will charge them for in the fiscal year 21 to reduce the amount of invoicing that we will be doing going forward. City of Plymouth would like to have their amount of their expenditure budget more in line with what we believe the actual experience will be for the department.
So the $28,000 per month is going to approximately what? That the City of Plymouth pays us?
I think it was 30... 34, 35, 33, something like that. We, it was.
Okay, so they're, they accept that?
$68,900 is being recognized from Wayne County. This was based on a prior year intergovernmental agreement. We had completed construction for ball field number four late in fiscal year 19. We did not receive revenue for that until the first part of fiscal year 2020. And also as part of that agreement was a reimbursement for Miller Park, which was completed during fiscal year 2020. And we have received the grant money reimbursement for that as well from Wayne County Parks.
And we are assuming no Wayne County Park money for 2021 in our budget.
I believe that is correct.
And Kurt, why are we doing that since they haven't stopped levying the tax?
Because they're keeping the money for themselves.
Wayne County is keeping the money for themselves, a park tax levied on us. That was an informal agreement that they made where they were passing it down?
That was an informal agreement that they made with the county commission many years ago. And it was basically that the, each county commissioner would receive a proportionate share of the park money that then they could redistribute amongst their constituents. So, but with COVID, the county has told us that we, we should not expect any park money allocation for next year. Now, it might happen still, but for now, we, we don't want to budget for something that we don't think we're going to get.
I'm trying to understand how COVID can affect the park revenue.
Because the county just, they've, they've lost a tremendous amount of revenue, they say. And so they're, they're doing exactly what the state of Michigan is doing right now. They're, they're not giving the money that was promised. They're holding on to their money so that they can balance their books.
They're not allowed to spend that money on general operating if it comes from parks.
They're not allowed to.
Wow, people, need to get to your county commissioner.
And the last item that you'll see is the request that we had talked about at the last meeting for $25,000 to be recognized for the expected Hilltop Golf Course cost share revenue based on projections and information that's been provided to the township. It's believed that there will be a overall net profit at the end of the year and we're going to recognize that here. And then we have requested the appropriation for fiscal year 21 as capital outlay in the Parks and Recreation Budget.
So Mark, will you eventually tell us what they're proposing to do with that $25,000 once they decide?
Yeah, I mean, that's a discussion that we can have with them in the spring. I don't want to just give them $25,000. I want to identify a capital project and we will manage the project and will, and we will make the expenses to the contractor.
Oh, we will?
Yeah, that would, that would be my intent.
Isn't that more expensive typically? Our costs are higher than theirs. You know, because we involve an engineer or something, we stack up costs.
We could put it through their contractor, but my, my point is I don't just want to.
You want to manage it.
I don't want to give them $25,000. I want to make sure it's something that's going to add value to the golf course and that we approve.
All right. They've given us, Chuck, they've given us a list of items in the past that they would like to see us donate funding towards that, that would go to the improvement of the course.
So the total amount of revenue being recognized in this request is $980,177. In this request is also a reduction of revenue. As part of the reductions, we're reducing $90,000 for the anticipated DPW land purchase agreement that was postponed by the board. We're reducing interest income in the amount of $40,000 due to bank interest rates being lowered. We're requesting a reduction in building permit revenue of $469,000 as a result of permits. As applications for building permit revenue is at this point, at the end of this, at the end of October, we have only realized approximately 49% of the revenue expected for 2020. This is a revenue reduction in the amount of $599,000 for a total overall fund balance revenue increase of $381,177. The fiscal year 2020 budget appropriations from the general fund is a request of $38,000 to the clerk's budget. This is for fringe benefits as a result of a full-time employee that was hired after the budget adoption in 2020 and an election for healthcare that was different from the prior person that held the position's election for healthcare and caused an increase in healthcare benefits to the department.
You said 38,000, you meant 3,800?
3,800, I'm sorry, I misspoke. The next slide item is for the amount that's made up in the elections office. You'll see one, two, three, four, five. Five, six items that are going to various accounts in the amount of $41,946 in election reimbursements for expenditures for both the state of Michigan's reimbursement for the general elec, or the election in May as well as the funding that came from the Center for Technology and Civil Life. The next item on the appropriations budget is the $25,215 that we talked about for the COVID grant relief fund that's to be used for PPE protection equipment before the end of the fiscal year.
Do you think that we'll be able to use that $25,000 or we'll be able to use some pre-buy for next year? So, so we're not going to leave it late, we're not going to let it go back?
No, we're going to, we're going to use it in this calendar year pursuant to the very strict grant requirements that are set out by the state. It'll be used for PPE for the most part. Maybe some other expenses that we've incurred, but I would say mostly for PPE.
Does an air purifier count? If you need an air, I'm just tossing something out.
Well, we would have to go back to the state requirements. They are very strict on what you can spend on and what you cannot spend it on. And we, we have incurred costs with respect to a purification machine that is in the police department that's used almost daily. And then we've also had this building cleaned, I would say, at least half a dozen times now, so.
There is a request for an appropriation for Park Department COVID refunds. An appropriation of $66,000 for the first responder hazard pay grant funding for the September payroll. That has been paid out, but the expenditure has not been appropriated. There is $7,300 requested for a grant for a life pack. This is a request from the fire department. They are working closely with the City of Dearborn Heights. This is a pass-through grant. This would be for defibrillators and... Help me out, Dan.
Yeah, life pack 15 defibrillators and AEDs, advanced automat, or automatic defibrillators that would be used by not in license DMF vehicles.
So there is a matching requirement of 10% by the township for that, for those items. And we're requesting 7,300 for this $73,000 capital equipment that we'll receive. We are requesting 20,000 to appropriate for trees. The board has appropriated or approved, I should say, the cost or the purchasing of trees. This is to amend the budget for that expense.
Is that for labor for planting? Tell me more about the 20,000.
This is for the purchase.
That was for the purchase of the residential tree planting program.
So purchase the trees but not dig the holes?
No, the holes had to be dug by a, by the homeowner or they had to hire a vendor to do that.
Okay, that wasn't the stuff that went in the, in the triangle?
No, the stuff in the triangle, the trees in the triangle are the wobasto trees. Those are being maintained by wobasto for the remainder of the season.
So I'm trying to, okay, the trees that went to the neighborhood?
Are the krembolee trees.
All right, and we bought them?
Yes.
Turned them over at no, no charge?
Yes. We, uh... I think there was maybe some modest fee that the resident had to pay, yeah. But the resident was responsible for installation and obviously upkeep. Many of the HOAs bought the trees and they're, they're sharing the cost.
There is a request for $18,000 to amend the building department's permit rate fund. There was one large unexpected refund given back to an individual that decided not to move forward with a building permit this year. The budget was only 10,000, the refund was 18,000, bringing the total expense for refunds to 28,000, which requires a budget amendment by the board. We have also some additional Bowie that took place this year at the parks locations. As a result, we are requesting a budget amendment in the amount of $16,400 to cover those expenditures.
The survey at Gulf, at Point Park or not Point Park, the Triangle?
Yeah.
So we spent $130,000 to survey that, an engineering survey?
No.
No? I'm trying to understand the math.
I, I'm trying to understand the $16,400, Ginger, that you have there for contractual services Gulfview Park survey. Could you elaborate on that number, where that came from?
Oh, yes, the contractual services budget was increased, is, is over budget this year. And the item that put it over was a park survey that was done at Gulfview.
I'd like to go over.
It was performed by Spalding, Dr.
Okay, I'd like to go over that with you offline because that's, that's an interesting number that I'm not familiar with.
Right. We, we approved two.
The amount that we need to amend the budget, I don't remember the exact amount that was expended for the survey, but the survey put it over.
Okay, the survey was supposed to be at $2,500 and that was going to be done by?
McKenna.
By McKenna, and it was. So what I need to find out from, well, we can go ahead and approve this tonight, but I, I want to find out what Spalding did with respect to that.
I remember it was a jury, it could have been a cat off.
Well, who made the map for the planting of the trees? Was it McKenna?
McKenna.
Okay.
Correct, but the survey was done by Spalding.
When you say survey, you mean transit?
Like staking out there for, for the plantings and the proposed sidewalk that was going in, in that triangle, that was done by Spalding.
All right, let's, let's talk about that offline. I don't want that to hold anything up here tonight, but I, I would like to take a, get a better appreciation for what, what happened there.
Okay, I'm going to back off a little bit. You guys are at the bottom. You skipped over. $72,100 is being requested for the cancellation of the SADs. We had a number of SADs that are not moving forward this year. We had Andover Lakes, Colony Farms, and Plymouth Meadows. Those are then a jury costs that will be picked up by the. Those are then a jury costs that will be picked up by the general fund and not by the SAD fund that's normally billed then to the resident once the SAD project moves forward. And an appropriation of $30,000 to the city of Plymouth for the dispatch cost share for the, for the grant funding that we received for the April payroll as the city of Plymouth pays for 30% of the dispatch expenses. And because of the grant funding for the payroll reimbursement that we received in April, a portion of that grant then passes back to the city of Plymouth. And at this point, we have calculated that to be in the amount of approximately $30,000. Total expenditures appropriated are the amount of $340,961. Any questions?
Okay, any questions from the board? Again, Ginger, great job, very thorough, very professional. We're thrilled that you're taking us to this level, that's great.
Very thorough.
Any questions from the audi, from the crowd, from the crowd? Yes, ma'am. You have to come forward, please. State your name.
With respect to the parks allocation from the county, they met on September 30th and said that, and they approved the budget with the allocations to the communities in it. There was no discussion of COVID being responsible for any, for not having allocations to the communities in the budget. And I'd like to know why two years in a row Plymouth Township failed to identify a project that would qualify them to receive the county's allocation, which I think was $63,000 each year.
More like $68,000, and we've received every penny of our Wayne County parks allocation.
Melissa Dobbs had said at the commission meeting that Plymouth Township did not identify projects two years in a row, and so that money was returned back to the parks general fund.
Well, we've.
Well, which projects were, did you use it for?
Miller Park was one of them, right?
Well, the pavilion at Miller Park, we've had numerous improvements at Township Park, we've had.
Well, you have to identify a specific project.
Okay, well, I'll be happy to get you that list tomorrow, we'll email it to you.
Okay, so Melissa Dobbs said we, that Plymouth Township's allocation was returned back to the parks general fund for the county.
Okay, well, I'll be happy to talk to Melissa Dobbs about that, thank you.
Okay, but there is going to be a parks allocation for next year. If there's no, there's no cancellation of that.
No one has informed me of that yet.
That's good news.
They had a board meeting on September 30th.
Well, that's wonderful, but no one has informed me of that yet, thank you. Okay, anybody else?
I have one question about the drug forfeiture. So we had not anticipated or we just hadn't budgeted because it's contingent, any money, but we did get a grant or we did budget it and we didn't get it. I'm not going, not clear on what happened.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, we don't, we, Jack, at the beginning of the year for the drug forfeiture funds, we budget zero for revenue because we don't, we can't budget and we can't anticipate if and when we'll be receiving any forfeiture money. So every time we do get a check, we have to go through this process of officially recognizing.
So we got a check for $277,000?
Is that a question still on the table? No, okay. Anything else, Ginger? Okay, so again, we'll be voting on this budget on November 10th. But don't go away, Ginger, we still need your help with budget wrap-up and discussion.
No, actually, I thought we were going to approve this.
No, we are? Oh, I'm sorry, this is the, this is the other, other thing, okay, okay. So you want the motion on that you passed out to us tonight?
Yeah, I'm happy to make the motion.
Mr. Dempsey will make that motion?
I'd be happy to read the motion.
Okay.
I move that the Board of Trustees hereby adopt Resolution 2020-10-27-97, authorizing the Finance Director to recognize general fund revenue in the amount of $381,177 and appropriate fund balance of $340,961 to recognize federal drug forfeiture revenue of $227,000.
And to?
And to recognize water and sewer revenue in the amount of $448,600 and appropriating $1.2 million amending the 2020 general fund and drug forfeiture fund balances and water and sewer funds net position.
Okay, motion's been made by Trustee Dempsey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman, Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Okay. Next, we have the budget wrap-up and discussion with Finance Director Moriarty. Is there any, why don't you walk us through this?
Okay. So slide, what, five? What, what?
Five. Page 115.
So we're backing up?
I'm sorry, did you say 125?
115.
115.
115, I'm sorry, my hearing is not what it was.
You call me a hold on.
Okay. So since September 22nd, we have already covered law enforcement, dispatch, jail, fire, drug forfeiture funds, general fund, brownfield, the DDA, water sewer fund tonight, solid waste, and the city transportation fund. Key points for tonight's budget, the revisions that were requested at the last board meeting for the general fund has resulted again in a balanced general fund budget of $17.5 million. Fiscal year 2021 revised general fund expenditure budget, revenues of $17.9 million, including grants, increasing total capital outlay request in the amount of $793,500 with a current revision of $232,000 affecting the proposed general fund revenue financing sources over the general fund expenditures, the financing uses, and increasing the expected surplus of $429,100. Next slide, please, page 116.
Got it.
Based on the requests that were made at the last board meeting, the revisions include in the Parks and Recreation Department budget, Hilltop Golf Course, Hilltop Golf Course projects in capital outlay in the amount of $25,000. Township Park Jogging Path in the amount of $150,000.
Let's stop on that one. Somebody tell us more about it and maybe that could qualify, seems like a lot of money, but maybe that could qualify for some of our allocation from Wayne County?
So the jogging path is a placeholder right now. It's based on the study that Spalding to Decker did a couple of years ago. And I did send you all a copy late tonight of that report. It was not intended that we're going to make a final decision on that, but for budgeting purposes, we just wanted to put that in there. In fact, I understand through the township engineer that 150 may actually be more than what we need. Would you like to elaborate?
Right, so when we initially came up with the budget, it was a project from 2015. We had a different design that was proposed and that was around actually $200,000, the cost for that. But we're proposing a change in material for the jogging path, which would bring down the cost to about $100,000.
Okay, I need to have you describe that a little bit more. Is this a repair or is this some other job?
It's a repair for the HMA pathway, which is the asphalt path all around Township Park.
So it's a perimeter path?
Yeah.
Correct.
The jogging path.
Walking path.
Walking path. Specific sections or the whole thing?
We estimated almost all of it would be, have certain repairs, just like a few inches of like asphalt you would put over it to kind of even out the whole path. That's what we estimated to get that $100,000 number.
You reduced it by 100?
We reduced it to $100,000. When we had originally proposed this design back in 2015, it was close to $200,000. But at that point, they were considering using, making it into sidewalk, which would be concrete, and that's just much more expensive.
So should this number be 100,000 now? Well, I'd like to keep it where it is just so that we have a cushion. But that would be to redo?
It's not redo, to redo is to repair.
So it's more of a capping?
It's capping, exactly.
You'll grind it and cap it.
For the paths around the Township Park.
All right, so maybe I should ask the question differently. This isn't to repair certain sections of the path?
We're, I mean, that could be when we get onto the field that not everything is repaired, but we've estimated that all of it will be repaired at this point. All of the asphalt will be repaired, not the sidewalk itself, which is concrete.
Right, the sidewalk is where people walk up and down from the parking lot. This is the path that goes all the way around the park.
All the way around.
Right, it kind of weaves around the whole park.
So as a placeholder, I guess this makes sense, but the decision has to be made whether you repair certain sections that are problematic?
Yeah, just from a, we went out there to actually do just a quick walkthrough and based on that, we would recommend most of it get repaired at this point because there's a lot of uneven surfaces, there's, you know, weeds growing through like the center of a lot of the trail. So that's where we did the estimate from.
All right.
Is there something in here for completing the connection to the rain garden, which is an easy job?
Yeah. No.
All right, but that's, you know, my judgment is it can be done by our own employees, but.
That's not a big.
Small amount, yeah.
Okay, anything else there under Park, anything else?
We have also included the goose mitigation request and the Lake Point place gate that was talked about at the last budget meeting as well as part of the parks budget. Communication phones, radios, there was some discussion about the items that needed to be included with the new phone systems, the items that were remaining as part of the old phone systems with ATT. Those have been determined through the IT department as to which phone lines will remain and which phone lines will no longer be in place. Those have now been included in the general fund budget for each department and the budget was revised to include an additional $37,000, I'm sorry, $37,000 to the budget. I've been here all day, so I apologize.
Is any of this eligible for drug forfeiture if it's allocated in the police department?
Can you repeat that?
Drug forfeiture?
Is any of this eligible for allocation to the drug forfeiture fund?
No, no, this is utility expense to the departments that use a telephone at their desk. It's just a normal cost. And the last item is an increase requested based on an increase to our streetlight utility for lighting. This is for the general fund portion. Based on the increased costs, it was determined that we needed to increase the requested budget another $9,000 to make sure we had sufficient funds to pay for this utility in fiscal year 2021.
This is because DTE has increased rates or we've added lights?
This is the choice portion. So DDA pays a portion, a general fund pays a portion for the streetlight. This is the general funds portion.
Of street lighting?
For street lighting. We were paying about $4,800 about, this is increased. So because of the increase, I want to make sure we have sufficient budget.
Seems like a large increase.
It was a large increase and I don't know, I put a small percentage of cost inflation in for 2021, assuming there will be another small increase. So I just want to make sure we have sufficient budget. If we don't use it all, it'll go back to fund balance. And that's all the amendments that we have for the general budget revisions and that includes the amount of the general fund revenues and expenses that were read at tonight's public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
We're going to talk, we're done with this item then, right?
These are all the revisions I have for tonight's meeting, correct?
Um, sidewalk gap program, is there any money anywhere in there?
The fiscal year 21 budget does not include gap sidewalk.
So I recommend that we consider that, see if there's some money around. I think there is, but that's my read on it. We haven't done any gap sidewalk work in a while.
General fund money or, and then how much?
Yeah, I think there might be general fund money or, I don't know, we need to look at it because I think there's money available. And plus, last year, when did the county cancel their handout to us on this? Was it this year or the year before?
It was this year.
This year. Maybe we'll get lucky at the county again, but we ought to think about sidewalk gaps because that's one of the biggest wants of our citizens is connectivity, walkability. With COVID, the need came to light real quick.
So I agree, I think now's the time to think about it because I think the plan is to approve the budget as presented on November 10th. And the question would be how fund something and how much? So is it a placeholder like the walking path of some number? That would be a statement that we want to do some kind of gap program. It wouldn't be based on an engineering study, but for example, if we put $100,000 in here, that would obviously affect the puts and the takes, but it would be a statement that a budget, or a sidewalk gap program should happen.
We have a couple of projects that are shovel-ready. Engineering's been done, the easements have been provided or signed over, but we'll have to, we need to talk about it. Maybe we need to have a special item on sidewalk gap or something after the election or whatever, but.
Well, we always have our goal-setting meeting in January, so we could, we could certainly put it on our, our goals. I'm not, I don't know, Ginger, if you want to put a placeholder for that in some certain amount. The money that we got from, from the county or what we were promised by the county a couple of years ago was $270,000.
Well, at worst, if we put an item in here for $100,000, that would reduce the expected surplus, right, down to?
The expected surplus is currently $429.
So we'd take it to $329 if we did 100 as a placeholder for now.
Well, we have payment in lieu money. I don't know how much is in that budget. It might be $50,000 to $100,000. In other words, it's payment in lieu when a developer builds a side, builds a development, he pays to us instead of building a sidewalk that has no value.
The budget for 2021 for sidewalk payment in lieu of budget is $20,000 and payment in lieu of trees is $20,000.
You mean that's all that's in the fund?
In fiscal year 20, we have collected $0 in payment in lieu of sidewalk funding and we have collected no funding in trees. Fiscal year 18, we did collect $22,000 for payment in lieu of trees.
I think we need to do some homework on the sidewalks. I think there's some money there and I think it's about $50,000, but.
I don't think it's that much at all. But we can, we can investigate that, we can talk to Spalding and to McKenna and see.
Right, I believe the plan was to have a meeting in a couple of weeks with that.
Yeah. So we can have a placeholder or we can, we can put this?
If you don't put a placeholder in, it will be forgotten or ignored.
Yeah, I think it's good to put a placeholder in, I would support that.
How much?
Let's just pick 100. You want to pick a different number? That's reasonable to.
Pick something different than 100, that way it won't get confused. Make it 110 or 120 because then there's too many hundreds in there and everybody will get confused.
All right, 105.
Let's just, let's just make it 100, okay?
Wait now, Chuck, Chuck, you said that we had some engineering work already done and some areas identified.
We have shovel-ready.
What, what kind of dollars were we looking at for? I don't want to spend any engineering dollars.
No, the engineering dollars has been sunk.
Yeah, so what, what do you think? Is this 110,000, does that cover the, you know, the projects that we've already identified?
No, no, that won't cover all of it, no. The project, one, the engineering-ready project is a short piece on the east side of McLumpa at Anniver Trail.
Yeah.
And North Territorial to the city line, which some people say is a sidewalk to nowhere, but I don't think so because it's a sidewalk to the city of Plymouth. And maybe the city of Plymouth could be jawboned to finish the sidewalk to their board. And maybe the city of Plymouth could be jaw-boned to finish the sidewalk to their border, but as it is, there's a very large easement there. Even if they didn't finish the sidewalk, you'd have an easy path and just go over the grass. Because there's a very wide easement between the Praise Baptist Church and Sheldon Road on the north side of North Territorial. So it wouldn't be a sidewalk to nowhere. But anyway, we got to think about, maybe somebody's got a better idea? So let's percolate it up in this meeting or something that's going on.
Yeah, but in the meantime, why don't we put the 100 in? So that when we approve the budget on the 10th, that will be in there as a.
That's fine.
As an initiative. Does track with the recreation survey, and that's what you were saying about what the residents want. So I think that's a good thing.
I liked the 110 idea, just.
Yeah, that way you don't get confused with the number.
Well, I was thinking maybe 103.1 or something.
Something along those lines, because you're right, 100,000 will be gone like that.
999,000, 990, that'll catch your attention.
All right.
Okay, so let's just, in all seriousness, let's just make it 100 grand, okay?
Since we're on parks, I guess.
That's what words are for.
Is there any cost if we decided to ever allow dogs in the township park? No big cost with that, probably?
Cost, you would.
Maybe a poop bag dispenser, I don't know, but that's peanuts.
Probably insurance.
Sign, no, insurance, we're covered.
Might have to have cleanup of it.
But anyway, so, okay, you said we don't need anything for that. That'll be another thing we can go through goals.
You just bring your dog in there anyway, like today anyway, it doesn't matter.
Going back, going back to what we talked about some time ago, was whether or not there should be a fee-based amenity at some location, some park. That's what other communities do.
Yeah, I guess I'm not ready to go that far yet, but.
Yeah, well.
Come on, come on.
That's.
You're talking about a real dog park.
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about just allowing you to walk it in.
No, I know what you're talking about. I'm not, I'm not saying no, it's just, there's considerations that we have to think about, and it's going to be, it's a public health issue, it's a cleanup issue.
But it's no capital probably, other than the poop bag dispenser or whatever.
So what does it matter? We don't maintain the rules today, and we've got 50 signs in there, and there's still dogs in there every day, so.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, go in there anytime, you'll see a dog.
Really? Is it getting all icky, or people are picking up?
Well, they get mad when I tell them something about picking up their own stuff, but, oh well.
Okay, anything else from the board? Pardon me?
Any other budget revisions?
Nope. Anybody else?
Question perhaps for the treasurer, that once this 2021 budget's approved, where do we stand on the unfunded liability question? We've made progress on the OPAB, so will you be able to present that to us at that meeting on the 10th, where we've made progress, what the numbers are going to be at the end of '21?
At the end of '21?
Well, with this budget approved, what will that mean?
I could do something, Jack, but to be honest, it would be just a complete swag. What we have in our, when we completed the 2019 audit, we had actual actuarial numbers, which showed how much we've contributed, what all the assumptions were, and we had an actual unfunded figure from that. I could anticipate what it was, but, you know, I'd be using assumptions that would be.
But that audit did a projection, so we just pick, we're going to be pretty close to that number. Didn't it project year by year?
As part of the audit, we'll be requesting it to be 75, and they'll be calculating the OPAB liability. Is that what we're discussing at the moment?
Jack wants to know, we know now, as of the end of 2019, what our unfunded healthcare liability is. What Jack wants to know is, could we get a swag of what our unfunded liability will be at the end of 2021? I could try to pull something together, it would be a guess at best.
I have really high confidence in your guesses, you've been really accurate so far.
Well, call me at the end of 2021 and see how close I was.
Well, I want to know before I approve this budget, what your estimation is and where we're going to be on these. I mean, where are we today on the pension fund?
On the pension fund?
Yeah.
I believe at the end of 2019, we were 65% funded. And for the healthcare, we were in the neighborhood of 7% to 10% funded. But we're still on track with our corrective action plan. As you recall, we put together a corrective action plan that would invest $1.2 million in year one, 1 million in year two, 250,000 each for the next four years, and then just let it ride till the year 2035.
Where we'll be at the 40% mandated state figure?
Yes, correct.
So you probably can do some kind of estimation. You call it a swag, I'll call it an estimation. I'd like to see that.
Okay.
On the 10th. Great, thanks.
Directionally, we should be pretty good, because the stock market has been good.
So.
The investments, the 1.2 million and 1 million we put into the healthcare trust fund took a big dip right after COVID hit, and now it's come up significantly. So, you know, we've made a, we've pretty nice return on our healthcare trust fund so far.
Good. Okay, anything else? All right, this does not require any action, but just modifications to the general fund budget that we'll be voting on next week, next meeting. Okay, next we have to go into a closed session. I would just let everybody know that we'll be returning out of the closed session, going back into open session. At that time, we will, I will ask, at this time, I'll ask you all to, once the vote is taken, to take, turn off your mics, we'll go into closed session. The TV will continue running, so if you're watching us at home, there'll be a certain delay, a gap, and just stay tuned for us for when we come back. When, if you're watching us on tape, I suspect that the gap will be edited out for convenience. Okay, so at this time, there is a closed session. I'm looking for a motion on item six.
Mr. Supervisor, I move we go into closed session?
You have to read the motion on item six.
At 8:37 PM, I move we go into closed session for the purpose of discussing written legal opinion rendered by the township attorney in accordance with Open Meetings Act, Section 8H, MCL 15.268H.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Treasurer Clinton. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yeah.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Supervisor Heising?
Yes.
Clerk Borby, yes. Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we are going into closed session. Please turn off your microphones, and if you're watching at home, please check back with us in a few minutes, hopefully, and we'll be. Okay, I need a motion to return to open session.
Mr. Supervisor, at 9:01 PM, I move we return back to open session.
Second. Is there a second? A motion's made by Trustee Heitman, seconded by Trustee Dempsey. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Borby, yes.
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 Yes. Okay, moving on to item F8. This is the FOIA appeal. We've liked to, at this time, entertain a motion from one of the trustees regarding the first FOIA appeal.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Dorchevitz?
I move that the board uphold the disclosure denial of Nancy Councilman's Freedom of Information Act request submitted August 26, 2020.
Motion's made by Trustee Dorchevitz, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll. Yes.
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 Okay, there is a second motion that needs action as well.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Dorchevitz?
I move that the board uphold the disclosure denial of Nancy Councilman's Freedom of Information Act request submitted September 25, 2020. The appeal of the time to fulfill the granted FOIA request, Freedom of Information Act request, is not subject to appeal.
Motion's made by Trustee Dorchevitz, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman, Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes again.
All set? Okay. All right, item G is public comment limited to three minutes. Anyone? Hearing none, board comments. I don't have anything tonight, gentlemen. We will see you all again on November 10th. That'll be our next board meeting, and it'll be very heavy on the budgets, as you can imagine. So that will be it. You can't hear me? Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Just some reports on the election. We have 14,000 absentee ballots out. We have about 10,006 returned. We're working a lot of hours, everyone's putting in overtime, coming in early, staying late, working weekends, and we're putting it together as best we can. The township will be open this Saturday in accordance with state law from 8 to 4 o'clock, where people can come in and get an absentee ballot. We will be taking advantage of the state law that allows us to do some pre-processing of ballots that will start at 10 o'clock on Monday morning, going to 8 PM. Also, because of that, the cutoff for returning or spoiling a ballot and getting another one will end at 10 AM on Monday, because once we start opening up, they'll be open. However, people will still be able to take their ballots to the precinct and surrender them if they want to change their vote. They could also come into the township after 10 o'clock, and they could surrender their ballots so that they can vote in the elections on Tuesday. And so we will be opening the ballots here. After it's done, we will be securing the doors. The police will have a security out front here to ensure the public that there's no tampering of the ballots whatsoever.
That's 24 hours a day. That's full, 24 hours, it will be under security here?
No, no, it'd be from 8 o'clock, when we finish opening ballots, until 6 o'clock in the morning.
To Tuesday morning.
Till it's Tuesday morning.
So Monday night to Tuesday.
Monday night at 8 till 6 in the morning.
Will be under security.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're asking people to forbear any kind of other activity in the township. Only clerk election-related stuff should be going on. And I want to thank the administration for helping with that, and also all of the employees who have volunteered to help.
What kind of notice are you putting out? The building department is critical that it continue to operate, because we're running out of weather. So please make sure that the building department has notified people or make it so no delays happen.
Right, we're all set on that. They're notifying anybody who's got stuff in process what's going to be going on.
Yeah. So what percentage of the votes that will be cast, do you think already have been cast?
Well.
With AV?
Well, we've got 10,600 votes back in. I'm anticipating if you have about an 80% turnout in a very strong presidential election, you'll have up around 19,000 votes total. So you're going to have somewhere in the neighborhood of 5,000-ish at the polls, unless, over the next few days, even more people come in and use the absentee ballot process.
Very good.
While I have the opportunity, I would like to really, very sincerely thank Gary Heitman and Jack Dempsey for your service. You guys brought civility back to the board. And every now and then, one of you had a pretty decent thought. So really appreciate your service, and I was really saddened that you decided, you know, not to seek reelection, but best of luck.
Thank you. Maybe we should run again. Record number of COVID cases today in the township? Very, very disappointing, again. Put your dog on masks on, people, please. Stay the hell away from each other and wash your hands. Personally, I'm very disappointed that four of the candidates who are running next Tuesday failed to ever come to one of these meetings. It's just disappointing as hell to me. We were certainly here, you know, and a couple of people that did show up, you know, did show up for a couple of meetings, but four just opted to never show up once. And that's just wrong. That's all I got.
Well, on a happier note, behind every great man is a great woman. So I appreciate Mrs. Heitman, you being here tonight on Mr. Heitman's birthday. Could be spending it elsewhere, but here you are as a citizen, supporting this township and bringing us cupcakes. So I want to thank you very much.
This is date night, this is great, look at this.
Well, she told me every night's date night with you, so.
Yeah.
It's just such a fantastic experience. And I do appreciate Bob referring to you as having the occasional good idea as opposed to me never having any good ideas.
Oh, good.
With that, I'll shut up.
Thanks.
One question for Jerry. Do you expect, how many spoiled ballots do you expect? To waste your time coming in, is it going to create a disruption?
Whenever there's a spoiling of ballots, it takes time. The person has to come in, you're talking about a 15, 20-minute process. They have to sign an affidavit, you have to reissue another ballot, and so you're talking about a 15-minute kind of episode, and if that.
That's huge.
If that cascades into a number of, a large number, then you're talking about a lot of man-hours. I'm hoping that that's not the case. So we'll have to kind of wait and see.
So you haven't experienced it yet?
We've had a few come in this week.
And it's better if they bring the ballots, right?
Yeah, yeah, amen.
I mean, you don't know what a voter's going to do with their ballot sometimes. They've thrown them away accidentally and say, maybe I've thrown it away. The new ballots are different colored than what they've been used to getting, so some people have thrown them away, thinking they were progressive advertisement for insurance. And so we get some of that. We get sometimes where people say, I just don't know what I did with it, you know? Can I get another ballot? But sometimes they're spoiling them because they've made errors of overvoting or voting for the party that they didn't intend to.
But when I was in here this week doing bills, your staff was tremendous in, there were people coming in saying, why did I get this? I never got it. And they showed them, this is where you signed up for it. Oh.
Well, this is what happens when you have multiple applications on one applicant. So people who did request a ballot back in March for the presidential primary, there was an option to do the November on that also. We asked the Secretary of State not to do that, but they insisted on it. And so people forgot that they asked for it then. Then when they got the August request, they only asked for August, forgetting that they had asked for the November one. And they came in, some people were upset, and we just had to show them, look, you signed this and asked for it, and that's why we sent it to you. So, and sometimes those people wanted to turn their ballots in and go to the polls.
Just quickly, I wanted to acknowledge the Herculean effort, in my opinion, that took place in the development of this budget. And if you think about where we've come over the last few years, we're now at a point where we've got every single budget, the governmental and the non-governmental, all completed in great detail. If you look at every line item in that budget, you'll see an explanation as to what that line item is. And it's all been done by the end of October to put the next incoming board in a great position.
in a great position going into next year. So I just want to acknowledge the effort that Ginger put into this process and thank her for it. Too bad she's not here, but that was, that was quite an effort.
Yeah, tremendous.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Supervisor, I move we adjourn at 9:13 PM.
Motion's made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second? Second by Clerk Vollewold.
Aye, aye.